We'll call a meeting to order. And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk call the roll please.
Connor?
Here.
Gary?
Here.
McMullin?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
Mayor Beattie.
Here. Okay, are there any changes to the agenda?
We have two more assumptions to improve after the public hearing.
With that, we'll go to public comments. So if anyone has a comment for council, we ask you go to the podium and state your name, and then you have three minutes. For the public comment portion, we'll ask to not make comments during this if it's re... If your comment is about the housing rehab grant, there'll be a separate section for that. So then we'll open up for public comments. Sir, I'll contract your time, and I'll let you know when you have 30 seconds left.
Thank you.
Could I add your name, please?
Jack Schuler. I just wanted to comment on the $1 million Kelly Bridge design proposal. I would like to encourage the council and mayor to accept that proposal and do forward with it. That bridge, I understand it's not a particularly high-traffic bridge, but it does join two neighborhoods together. And I know that the residents in that neighborhood are having to now go out of their way and around into other parts of town in that area. So I would just like to encourage you all to accept it.
Thank you. Okay, are there any other comments for council not related to the housing rehab grants? Yeah, come on up.
I'll let Kimberly respond. Hi, my name is Kimberly Crawford. I just wanted to address code violations, like city ordinance code violations such as trash, overgrown yards, things like that. From my understanding, we have to call somebody now?
Code enforcement.
Code enforcement. We used to have someone who used to drive around and automatically issue those tickets. Maybe the community resource officer could maybe handle some of that? I mean, I know she gives parking tickets and non-moving violations and things. Why can't she drive around and he, she, whoever it is? I mean, I've called code violation on people in my neighborhood three times. Nothing has happened. The past, uh... Just the look of it. We have this housing grant that we're trying to do to rehab our city, but we have people who have so much junk and trash and overgrown just idiosyncrasy in their yard that I'm thinking, why are we even investing if we're not going to clean the neighborhood up? If we're not going to enforce the city codes? It costs zero money to take your trash out. It costs zero money to clean. It really does. I mean, I don't know. That's my comment is, can we find a better way of enforcing the codes? Because people's yards are looking like trash. And it doesn't have to be that way. I mean, I'm near the same part, you know? I mean, it's... It's, um... That's my comment.
Do you think...
Say, you think differently?
Hi, I'm Kathy Wood. And I live on Kent Street, about a block away from the park. Now, my fence is in a triangular... It's a corner house. It's in a triangular spot. I mean, the fence is triangular because the other side of my fence belongs to the railroad. And I couldn't build my fence there. Now, I called to complain because they... The railroad often lets the grass get real high. And this is a very long... There's a street between tracks and my yard.
Your stroming, okay?
Yeah. And west side of the street. Um, no, that would be...
You're on the north side.
There you go. Anyway, I called and talked to a couple people from the city. And I said, um, can you please see to it that they cut the weeds and the grass there? And I've seen them cut it across the street, and they keep skipping my yard. And, um... I was told, well, um... They were there first, basically, and blah, blah, blah. And I said, well, if my... How many inches would my grass have to be before I got ticketed for being overgrown? And he told me, go higher than they to cut that grass and the weeds. And I haven't gotten an answer. Nothing's come of it. And it's really annoying. I really wish something would get done. That's all.
All right, any other public comment for tonight? So we'll go to item one on the agenda, which is the public hearing regarding the federally funded Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Housing Rehab Grant. We get a motion and second to open the public hearing.
So move second.
Tim with the motion and Matt with the second. Clerk call the roll, please.
Connor?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
McMullin?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Mayor Beattie.
Aye. This time we'll request what Mr. Kevin Lindeman from NCICG start and discuss the grant. And then we'll open up for public comments.
Thank you. There is a signing sheet going around. If you haven't signed it, if you do that, please, it helps with the points. So thank you for doing that. Thank you for showing up tonight. The purpose of this meeting is to obtain citizen's views concerning the citizens' cities' plans to submit a grant application to the Illinois Community Development Block Grant Program, or CDBG. City intends to submit a $650,000 CDBG grant application to the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity. The application will be for funds to rehabilitate ten owner-occupied, single-family homes within the municipal city limits of the city's street. Grant funds requested...
Excuse me, excuse me, please. I'm sorry. Is there some way you could face us when you're talking?
We can't hear anything you're saying.
The switch is off.
Is that better?
Yes.
Can you hear me now?
Maybe.
The grant funds requested are for construction, administration, and construction supervision costs associated with the project. City's Streeter is applying for state grant assistance to help local elected and appointed public officials and key civic leaders work with local homeowners and constituents to find neighborhoods of the community to decisively address the need for structural rehabilitation of their homes. The local allocation of state grant assistance is limited exclusively to qualifying owner-occupied single-family homes which lack the financial resources to address structural problems that render the single-family residential structure as substandard by comparison with the city's minimal housing codes. This year's proposed state funding will be complemented by $20,000 from the city's general fund for use in conjunction with the Illinois Community Development Block Grant Program. These additional funds will be added to the direct rehabilitation work for the income-eligible homeowners residing within the city's municipal limits that has been selected by the city for rehabilitation assistance. Specifically, the city's Streeter working in collaboration with the Streeter Rehabilitation Advisory Committee, Barnet Construction, and the North Central Illinois Council of Governments proposes to utilize the state's CDBG grant resources to stabilize, revitalize the project target area. Housing rehabilitation, neighborhood revitalization efforts will be supervised by the Streeter Housing Rehabilitation Advisory Committee for the city of Streeter and must be completed within 24-month period, or less, as required by the CDBG grant agreement. As outlined in the city of Streeter proposed 2023 Competitive Housing Rehabilitation Grantification, $650,000 of CDBG grant funds from DCO will be used to provide direct financial assistance for essential home rehabilitation to an estimated ten previously identified low and moderate-income residents residing within a multi-block project area of the city limits for the substandard single-family residential structures of minimal housing codes. This will be accomplished through the extension of a five-year forgivable loan to the income-eligible homeowner to correct locals' housing code violations, including deficiencies, which pose immediate and serious threat to health and safety for the structures economically disadvantaged occupants. No city residents will be displaced as a result of this project. The city has on file an anti-displacement relocation assistance program. At this point, I'd like to ask if any questions or comments about the overall project?
Yes, you didn't state what year you're basing the income on. Is it for '23 or '22?
It was '23's income.
Twenty-three.
What the survey was based on.
Did you... Excuse me. Did you, um... Say $20,000 total?
No. $20,000 is what the city is putting in for match towards the project for a total of $670,000. We're asking for a $650,000 grant. And that's the match one you can ask for to the state.
Did I hear correctly? There's only going to be ten families chosen?
Yes, in this round. We're currently doing a project right now in a smaller project area than the whole city limits. And there's ten, I believe, in that section, too. This is a program that we can continue to tap into over the years. So, but we can only do ten homes at a time per application.
How... When will there be a decision made on this?
The decision is from the state of Illinois. The application's due January 18th. We will probably find out sometime this summer when that is, if you're selected or not. At that point, there'll be a public meeting to promote the program again. We'll be then taking applications. The surveys that residents filled out now, just recently, was to qualify the city as a whole for the program. Then individual homes would have to reapply, and you have to verify income, ownership of the property, that you have insurance, and that you qualify for the program, that you have a need. So there'll be a process for that, and that'll be advertised and publicized once the grant's awarded.
Okay.
How will the five-year forgivable loan work? And if there's some guarantee that if we put the money into these homes, the homeowner can't, two days later, go and sell this home for more of a profit?
Right. That's where the five-year forgivable loan comes in, to where that is not... Deters that, because then you have to pay it back.
If it's valid in five years?
Right, yes. If there's... Sometimes there's extenuating circumstances, things happen in life, then that's forgiven. But you can't just turn around and sell it and flip it. And you have to qualify also. You have to be living in the house to do it. So there are parameters for it.
Did I understand correctly? This isn't a grant for the homeowners, it's a loan?
It is. It's a forgivable loan over five years. And it, um... Spreads out over... So every month that you're in the house, if you're there two and a half years and something happens, you have to move out and sell, then you get two and a half years forgivable.
So that means we have to make monthly payments?
No, there's no payments to be made. It's because the money is coming to the city. The improvements are made by contractors that has bid out, the project's bid out, of what improvements are going to be made. And that would be gone through on each individual house, not everything. So there's a limit to that of the $60,000. So there's no payments. The homeowner has to put nothing into this. It's the forgivable loan that, as you're staying in the home longer, that the amount of money that you would have to pay back if you sold the house gets, you know, prorated over a monthly basis. You're going to be inclined on that amount.
So as long as you don't move or anything like that within five years, you're fine?
Yes, right. Is there another question?
There's one. A gentleman come to my home and went around the house and looked at it and checked out some information. And then I got this letter in the mail. Is that something towards that he's looking towards using my home as one of the homes that needs to be fixed?
That is looking at, you'd felt the survey, and we looked at the house, and then there are some needs there, things that need to be fixed. That doesn't qualify that you would get the funds if the grant's awarded. You would then have to apply for... Just to help the city qualify to get the funds, to show there's a need in Streeter for... We have, you know, thirty-some, at least thirty-some homes that need improvements. So they want a three-to-one ratio for this program. So it does that. So he did, came around and did an assessment. It's what we call sidewalk assessment. There are three homes that he actually knocked on the doors and went through, and actually did a cost estimate. I don't know. So we did a minor, moderate, and major cost estimate so we can show the need here in Streeter of how much improvement needs to be done. And then we will utilize a hopeful $650,000.
And because he came to my home, does that... When does the application come to where I need to fill it out so that I can...
That would be after, if the grant's awarded. We will find out again, like I said, this summer, hopefully, or next summer, that the city has awarded the grant. If the city's awarded the grant, then the program will be publicized, and it'll be explained of how you can apply for the funds. And then it goes to, you have to qualify based on income, need, and that you own the home, that you have insurance on it.
Just go to my mom's last phone number.
I understand that there's unfortunate situations where that's... That we can't... We can only move as fast as the program is.
Okay. Do you... Oh, I'm sorry. Do you do this, like, once a year? Or can you do this again in June?
They... Their applications are taken once a year by the state of Illinois. We applied two years ago for the current program.
You're saying structural, is that inside and outside?
Yes. So it can be health and safety issues, plumbing...
Like water, electric?
Right, yes. So we have our experienced housing inspector. He has thirty-plus years' experience to come and look at. So if you fill out the application after the grant's awarded, you fill out the application, you get selected based on priority points, then he would come and do an assessment of what needs he had done based on how much we have in a budget.
Is it too late to file an application?
No, this is, again, this is... We have enough, we have enough surveys respondents right now to qualify for the application. It's if, then, the grant's awarded in the summer, we'll let everybody know and say, hey, now, we've been awarded, and now we're going to be starting to actually take applications where you have to prove income, insurance, ownership, and that stuff. Where then that would be publicized, and you'd know that. And there's a pack in the process that would be... So we're hoping that we hear that this summer. By next summer, fall, that we'd be taking applications.
Okay, so we need to put our name on that sheet?
No, if you were, if...
And we missed the first people.
That's fine. If you were here tonight, you could sign in on that. It would be helpful for the application.
Okay.
You said he already went into a couple homes?
Yes. And that was, that's to qualify the city. That doesn't mean those homes are getting money. It doesn't mean if you weren't, you're not getting money. This is to qualify the city as a whole.
Well, the thing that I'm wondering is, I thought the federal government was going to get rid of these lead pipes in all the houses. And I have heard nothing. This is why I'm here tonight. I got plastic copper and lead pipe in my house.
I think in this program, I believe, I'd have to double-check, but with dressed like that, we can... I'll answer that. We can answer that question when you get funded to do that. And we'll make a note of that. But this is, you know, it's to do more than just that. You know, electrical work, that kind of thing. Roots, that kind of stuff.
I have two questions.
Yeah.
The first one, how will we be notified? Is that going to be publicized in our local paper?
Yeah, there'll be a press release that goes out. They'll be publicized, I'm sure, put it on the city's website, Facebook page, when that announcement happens.
And then, secondly, are the priority points... And that is how you are awarded the ten homes over the thirty homes? Out of the thirty, right?
Right. That's how many applications we get prioritized as they come in, and we can fill out. Any other questions?
Sure.
So so far, people have filled out the survey and participated. If we find that we are awarded the grant, then, even though people have participated in this survey, other people can come and join in and help out for that application, correct?
Right. Anybody's still open to anybody. And even those people that fill out the survey, this is just kind of to qualify the city again. So there's more detail, more information that needs to be gathered, again, about ownership.
So right now, there's no list of anybody?
That's going to get funds. No, we're just trying to get the funds to Streeter first. And then we'll do the publicizing of the program and what's the getting, collecting application fee.
All right.
Any other questions? I still have a few things to go over.
So these community development grants, I just did some cursory research. This one is for housing, but there are also ones available for things like infrastructure, right?
Correct.
Can we draw two simultaneously?
Yeah, and the city has applied for received public infrastructure funds from the state before. They currently don't have a project for this year, I've heard. So I would...
We're still working on the one from last year.
Right. So they've got funds for a project that they're still implementing. So by the time you get the award, it usually takes, you got 24 months to get that project completed, whether it's public infrastructure or housing. A few more things. Thank you, Mayor. Department of Commerce may allocate $7 million to this program component and will establish a grant ceiling of $650,000 per project. Grant funds can only be used for construction of single... Or rehabilitation of single-family residential activity delivery and rehabilitation administration services. City Streeter, North Central Illinois Council of Governments, and Barnet Construction are completing the application requirements for the January 18, 2024 deadline. Funds for the Illinois Community Development Block Grant Program are granted to the state from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD. The Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity that distribute these funds throughout Illinois, except for those communities and counties that get direct entitlement funds from HUD, which our area is not. These funds are dispersed by the state to be used for housing rehabilitation. Must meet the national goal of benefiting 100% low or moderate-income individuals. The project will benefit 100% low or moderate-income residents. Of the $650,000 CDPG funds, all $650,000 will directly benefit low or moderate-income individuals. Next, we'll talk about community development housing needs the city has to show that they have... City has financial need for these funds, so they're not spending their own on these projects. City maintains a list of prioritized such projects and is updated from year to year. I'm going to read off a list of these projects, and we'll offer any additional comments on those or additions to the projects. Projects listed, Public Works Facility Project, $3 million. Vermillion Greenway Trail Extension, $800,000. Colrun Creek dredging, $600,000. Park and builds your bridges, $1 million. Waste water treatment plan, Coriant System Project, $1 million. Remediation of contaminated brownfield, Dustrow Site, $8 million, showing a total of $14.4 million. That's to show the state of Illinois that the city has the needs to spend money elsewhere. That's why the grant's needed to help homeowners rehabilitate their homes. Any additional ideas that anybody has? City or public? Okay, if there's none. Application records are on file at the city's Streeter located at 204 South Plowton Street. Open Monday through Thursday, 7:30 to 5:00. Friday, 7:30 to 1:00. They're also available at NCICG office at 613 West Marquette Street in Ottawa. Our office is open from Monday to Friday, from 8:00 to 4:00. Anyone who is interested in viewing the file or discussing the project further may call NCICG office at 815-433-5830 or visit during office hours. There's no other comments. The jury's in the public hearing at 7:22.
Excuse me, can you say that phone number again?
815-433-5830.
Any... Any further questions? For Kevin?
All right, I just wanted to comment and thank everyone for attending tonight. This helps our grant application. And filling out the surveys and being here does help us try to get more points so that we can be awarded the grant, which is a big help for all of us. So thank you.
Okay, get a motion and second to close the public hearing.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Dave with the motion and Tim with the second. Clerk call the roll, please.
Connor?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
McMullin?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Mayor Beattie?
Aye. Do we want to do the two resolutions right now? Can I get a motion and second to enter a resolution of support and commitment of local funds for the CDBG grant for the housing redevelopment project? Okay, Matt and Tim, the motion and second. Any comment or discussion? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Connor?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
McMullin?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Mayor Beattie?
Aye. Resolution 2023-50, approving the 2024 through 26 Local Administrative Policy and Procedures Manual Housing Rehabilitation Plan. I get a motion and second to approve.
Second.
Okay, Tim and then Dave with the second. Any discussion? Okay, clerk, call the roll, please.
Connor?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
McMullin?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Aye. So we are... Said you're welcome to... If you're here for the public hearing, you're welcome to stay. You're welcome to head out if you'd like to go. But thank you for being here. We'll go on to item two, which is adopting and approving a budget for the city of Streeter for the fiscal year 2024. Okay, you said the motion and just made with the second. So we had a motion and second, just letting it kind of clear for. All right, any discussion?
Well, City Council reviewed proposed budget at number over the past month, month and a half. The full budget, I did provide a list of requests for the cuts if the council chooses to make it, but that those cuts are not in the budget for you tonight unless you decide to make those changes. Across all of our funds, our our expense line is
Long email address.
$29,332,382,337 in revenues. The deficit is largely due to just the timing of payments for capital projects, with the exception of our general fund, which is, I forget the number off the top of my head, 302,000 or so in in the red. Most of that is due to just delayed availability revenues, which we expect to receive next year. So it's not a structural deficit in that regard because there will be revenues coming at that expense in the future year. We did save up the our fund balance over the past couple of years, largely due to our COVID money, which we're not allocated for other purposes until we get through the full establishment of our EMS program. I'll just stop there. Any questions anyone would have?
Well, you know, it depends. If I thought the deficit is going to repeat itself year in year out, let's call it a structural deficit, then I'd be looking at making cuts in expenses that are going to repeat every year. That's not the case here. So where I would cut would be kind of a one-time person. So I'd be focused more on the capital side. But I I think we're in a solid position and it's very likely we'll after the annuals revenues gets up to the level, we'll we'll have we'll continue to have some fund balance that be available to spend for a capital item at one time. I I hesitate to start hiring a bunch of people because eventually we'll run out of money because that would be a recurring cost. So unless we really get hit with unusually high insurance costs or other costs next year, I think we'll be in a pretty good situation. And we're also making headway with the unfunded liabilities for replacement by retention programs. We did forecast four or five years, fully funding our contributions. Last year, we actually made more than 100% or in the current fiscal years, we're making that. And so we are making headway there. We still have a long ways to go because our fighter was in the 20, mid 20% hell funded. Now we're in the upper 30s or so. So we have a ways to go. Right, that would be comfortable. But we're making we're moving in the right direction.
Are there any other questions on the budget? Do you want to modify to remove any of the items to cut? And it's we do have cash reserves that will make that difference.
You have that. Plus, you haven't decided tonight to spend it. That'll come back later. You know, if you go out and buy a piece of equipment or this simply allows the council to spend it later because it's essentially appropriating the money. So you can legally spend it during the fiscal year. You don't have to. In fact, I kind of caution staff against spending the capital lines early in the fiscal year because you can have no wiggle room later out in the year if revenues come in under budget.
I know in the past, we've tried to hold off a lot of things if we can until June, July, when we get our mid-year review and then.
Exactly.
Can go out, make sure we're still on a good footing. So. There's no further discussion. I'll have clerk call the roll, please. Approving and approving the budget as received.
Aye. Gary.
Aye.
McMullin.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Mayor Beadie.
Aye. Item three is ordinance 2023-21 for the levy and assessment of taxes on real property for all purposes for defraying expenses for all corporate purposes for the City of Streeter, LaSalle, Livingston Counties for the fiscal year January 1, 2024, and ending date is December 31, 2024. Get a motion and second.
Second.
Okay, Tim and then Moose with the second. Any discussion? This is kind of as presented based on our committee of the whole last week. No changes? Any comments, questions, discussion? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Connor.
Aye.
Gary.
Aye.
McMullin.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Mayor Beadie.
Aye. Item four, ordinance 2023-22, abating the tax levy. So the next four through nine are going to be very, very similar, but this is to abate tax for various bond payments. So item four is 2023-22, abating tax levy for 2023 for principal and interest on 3.2 million general obligation bond series 2015, City of Streeter. Get a motion and second.
So moved.
Second.
Hey, Moose and Matt. Any discussion?
Mayor Matt with the second.
Yes. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Connor.
Aye.
Gary.
Aye.
McMullin.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Mayor Beadie.
Aye. Item five, ordinance 2023-23, abating tax levy for the 20 for year 2023 to pay principal and interest on 2.34 million general obligation bonds series 2016B. A motion and second.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Tim and Dave Reed with the second. Any discussion? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Connor.
Aye.
Gary.
Aye.
McMullin.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Mayor Beadie.
Aye. Item six, 2023-24, abating the tax levy for year 2023 to pay the principal and interest on 1.485 million general obligation bond series 2017A. A motion and second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Moose and Tim with the second. Any discussion? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Connor.
Aye.
Gary.
Aye.
McMullin.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Mayor Beadie.
Aye. Item seven, ordinance 2023-25, abating tax levy for 2023 on 1.325 million general obligation bond series 2017B. Get a motion and second.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Moose and Matt. Any discussion? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Connor.
Aye.
Gary.
Aye.
McMullin.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Mayor Beadie.
Aye. Item eight, ordinance 2023-26, abating tax levy for 2023 on 585,000 general obligation bond series 2017C. Get a motion and second.
So moved.
Second.
All right, I'll go Dave Connor, Dave Reed. Any discussion? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Connor.
Aye.
Gary.
Aye.
McMullin.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Mayor Beadie.
Aye. Item nine, ordinance 2023-27, abating tax levy for 2023 to pay principal and interest on 2.5 million general obligation bond series 2019. Motion and second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Matt and then Tim with the second. Any discussion? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Connor.
Aye.
Gary.
Aye.
McMullin.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Mayor Beadie.
Aye. Item 10 is ordinance 2023-28 regarding the Illinois Paid Leave for All Workers Act for the City of Streeter, LaSalle and Livingston Counties. Get a motion and second.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Tim and then Dave Reed with the second. And then was this our part-time employees that were impacted?
Part-time. And certain part, we have part-time employees that are covered by the new contracts. So this would be part-time, like the college kids who have a colored horse.
Any further discussion?
Clerk, call the roll, please.
Connor.
Aye.
Gary.
Aye.
McMullin.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Mayor Beadie.
Aye. Item 11 is Resolution 2023-47, appropriating 414,000 of MFT funds in connection with roadway maintenance projects for maintenance of streets and highways. The City of Streeter under provisions of the Illinois Highway Code. Get a motion and second.
Make the motion.
Second.
Okay, Dave Reed and Tim with the second. Jury for discussion.
This is the annual appropriation of MFT funds. You approved the budget. This is the would show on the MFT line of the budget. So this funds of Public Works Materials, Oil, Aggregate, Salt Materials for the for 2024, as well as there's $200,000 in there for repaving of Forest Street from 23 back to Chaffron. So that's what the 414 is made of.
All right, any questions or further discussion? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Connor.
Aye.
Gary.
Aye.
McMullin.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Mayor Beadie.
Aye. Item 12, Resolution 2023-48, awarding a contract to Chamblin and Associates, Inc., Ottawa, Illinois, for engineering design services in connection with the Kelly Street Bridge Reconstruction Project. Get a motion and second.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Tim with the motion and Matt with the second.
This is a very public comment. This this is actually about this $130,000 contract with Chamblin and Associates to design the bridge, get it permitted through IDOT and all the all the requirements. If we do this and have a set of plans that can be built, the county is then going to be the lead agency of building it. That's the million dollar price then. So estimated is a million dollars. So once the plans are in hand, the county will take it from there and use federal funds to build it.
So our cost will be 130,000?
130,000.
Do they have a idea?
A timeline?
Basically, it's it's programmed with the from the county to the state for building in fiscal year 25, state fiscal year 25, which starts this July, July 24, and runs out June of 25. So we'll we're probably in that spring timeframe of 25. If everything went great, it'd be start of the fall, but it was probably a spring of 25. But we had to get it. That's why we're putting it on agenda early so we can get Chamblin working quickly in the new year to get it designed.
Any other questions or discussion?
I was in Walmart yesterday, day before, and had somebody stop me and tell me, make sure you get that done. We're tired of driving all the way around. Five minutes later, somebody else stopped me and said, don't do that. Whatever you do, I live right by the bridge and I get so much traffic. We don't want it done. I think, you know, like most things, whatever you do.
Someone's acting me.
Yeah, you're going to make an enemy. So.
All right. And if there's no further discussion, I'll have clerk call the roll, please.
Connor.
Aye.
Gary.
Aye.
McMullin.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Mayor Beadie.
Aye. Item 13 is a motion to approve the meeting and holiday schedule for the calendar year 2024. Get a motion and second.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, if Matt and Dave Reed.
Change.
All right, any discussion?
Would the council be opposed to getting rid of the two that live the whole meeting and going to the first Wednesday, the third Wednesday of the month for our meetings?
Opposed or?
We used to have two meetings a month.
We still we still do. It's just ones at four and ones at seven.
Right. I'd rather have all our meetings at seven o'clock.
So you'd want you'd want the two of you to have the whole meeting at seven?
I don't want to be the whole meetings anymore. I want a council meeting.
Two council meetings a month as opposed to.
It's just semantics. We got to be here twice a month anyway.
Right, right.
It's just what you call it and what you're allowed to do at the meeting.
I'm not opposed to it. Do you want to make a decision tonight or?
When do we have to have our schedule set?
You can amend the schedule at any time. You just have to give 10 days notice.
Okay.
Then we can do.
First and third Wednesday instead of the.
So you do January as is and then move on.
Second Tuesday and the third Wednesday.
All right, we'll prove as is and then we'll so we'll stay the same for January and then if we want to decide, we can amend it and move in our January meetings. And then February could go to the new schedule. Thank you. All right, clerk, call the roll.
Connor.
Aye.
Gary.
Aye.
McMullin.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Mayor Beadie.
Aye. Item 14, Consent Agenda. Can I get a motion and second to approve the consent agenda with fund warrant total of $2,276,819.39?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Tim and then Moose. Any discussion? All right, clerk, call the roll, please.
Connor.
Aye.
Gary.
Aye.
McMullin.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Mayor Beadie.
Aye. Item 15, City Official Comments. Who wants to start?
I'll go. I'm going to pick on Jeremy. Any news, updates on the stoplights?
So, yes, so all the battery backups were installed on Monday. So it's there's you guys approved two things, new battery backups and new controllers. Battery backups were installed on Monday. So now, for the first time in 10 years, if the power goes out, those street lights will stay on. So no one really knew that that was an issue. But so that's done. And at this point, it's basically the computer controller has to be unplugged and the new one plugged in. I'm still holding out hope it may happen Friday, but if not, it's they have them. They the consultant from IDOT who tweaks the timings has to come too. So that's what we're waiting on. So but they're all.
We're making progress.
Yes.
October 29th, you need help.
Okay.
Happy holidays. Merry Christmas. I'd just like to, well, first of all, since this is our last meeting of the year, official meeting of the year, I'm going to thank the staff for all the work they do all year long. They never get thanked and they do a lot of the behind the scenes stuff for us. And I'd like to also echo what Tim said. Happy holidays to everybody. Merry Christmas. Have a safe and happy holiday.
All right. Again, I'll just say the same. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Whatever you celebrate, have a good one. Stay safe. And any other city officials?
We have a newly closed session.
Okay, so no closed session tonight. So that's a Merry Christmas present from Mr. Klein.
I would like to remind the council that we have an annual economic forecast dinner coming up. I think we are sent that out to everybody and I just want that to stay on everybody's radar.
The 231st?
Yes.
Do we RSVP to you?
You can. I'll take care of it by January 17.
G O C E V C.
That's a silver box. We're hosting.
And it's in the silver box.
Yeah, we are hosting for the whole county, Livingston County.
It's a big deal.
Yes, it is.
CEO of Ventures coming to us.
Yes. So you will be receiving emails from your managers.
I request a motion and second to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, Tim and then Dave Reed with the second. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Connor.
Aye.
Gary.
Aye.
McMullin.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Aye. So we adjourn.